I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Public Finance Authority, Water Utility Authority, Housing Successor Agency and City Council order. City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Mora?
Here.
Councilmember Martin?
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Prothamsamora?
Here.
And Mayor Rounds?
Here.
Members of the Public Financing Authority and Water Utility Authority receive $150 for their attendance at these meetings.
Thank you. Public comments? Public comments are now open. The public may address the City Council on closed session items only. For those that are here to make a public comment, you will have an opportunity once the city clerk announces your name. You will have three minutes to speak. City Clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak?
No speakers, Mayor.
Closed public comments. I'd like to call upon the city attorney to read the closed session items.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, the record should reflect that the City Council will recess into closed session to discuss the two items posted on today's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now recess to closed session. We will reconvene the meeting after the closed session discussion to hear a report from the city attorney and to continue with the rest of the meeting.
Forgot my glasses.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to reconvene the meeting. City Attorney, is there any closed session items to report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. The records reflect that the City Council recessed in the closed session. All members present to discuss the two items posted on tonight's agenda. With respect to both items, the City Council received a briefing from staff. Feedback was provided, but no final action was taken in closed session. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call upon Councilmember John Moore to lead us in today's invocation. Please rise.
We direct our thoughts to you, Almighty God, and ask your blessings on everyone present. Please accept our gratitude for your goodness and generosity. Give us wisdom, courage, and foresight to accomplish the work before us. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing. At this time, I'd like to invite the Youth Leadership Committee for the Pledge of Allegiance. I love it. We have a full house tonight.
And all girls.
And all girls.
Up here, girls.
Up here.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, girls. Now, the new ones. Anybody new here? Not yet. So you know the tradition. Introduce yourself and let us know what school you go to, please. No, I just turned it on.
Hello, my name is Jaden Brown. I go to Santa Fe High School, and I'm currently a junior there.
Hi, my name is Michaela Leva. I'm a junior at Santa Fe High School.
Hello, I'm Valerie Gambola, and I am also a junior at Santa Fe High School.
Hi, my name is Angelica Camboa, and I'm a freshman at Santa Fe.
Hi, my name is Melana Ruiz, and I'm a freshman at Santa Fe High School.
Hello, my name is Audrey Perez, and I'm a junior at Santa Fe High School.
Hello, I'm Valeria Corona, and I'm a junior at Santa Fe High School.
Hi, my name is Sophie Pantoja, and I'm a junior at Santa Fe High School.
Hi, my name is Serenity, and I'm a junior at Santa Fe High School.
Thank you very much, girls. Our future leaders. At this time, I'd like to introduce the following representative from the Chamber of Commerce. First, we have Nico Schubin from Servwell Disposal and Recycling. And Kathy Fink, our Santa Fe Springs Chamber CEO. Tonight, first presentation, we have the Youth Leadership Committee report. I'd like to call upon Youth Leadership Committee to the microphone, please. And Wayne Bergeron.
Even though I'm not young, I will go ahead and start off. Real quickly, before we invite the Youth Leadership Committee to come up, my name is Wayne Bergeron. I'm the Community Services Supervisor, and I also serve as the Executive Secretary to the Youth Leadership Committee. For the benefit of the public, the Youth Leadership Committee is a council-appointed committee that serves as a voice of the youth. And in January, they were afforded an opportunity to go on a retreat, and so I will turn the remainder of the time over to members of the WLC to recap the retreat.
Mr. Mayor and City Council members, good evening. My name is Valerie Gambola, and I am, sorry, and I am the chairperson of the Youth Leadership Committee. Recently, the Youth Leadership Committee conducted its retreat to Green Valley Lake in the San Bernardino Mountains from January 17th through January 20th. The retreat provided us an opportunity to get to know each other through many games and through many team bonding activities. Although the drive up there was really packed with traffic, it was so worth it going to Neo's Pizza and trying their delicious pizza and garlic nuts.
Good evening. My name is Valeria Corona, and I'm a member of the Youth Leadership Committee. In addition to the icebreakers and team bonding activities, there were opportunities for us to take walks in the fresh mountain air, play group games, and to even stargaze. Dinner was incredible as we ate family-style, and it offered conversations to be shared around the table, including the temporary shutdown of TikTok, which had the group in a frenzy. No matter on what side of TikTok debate you were on, the only one thing we could all agree on was that Mr. Bergeron was a really good cook.
Good evening. My name is Jaden Brown, and I am also a committee member of the WLC. While at our retreat, it was not all fun and games. While we were there, the city staff that accompanied us went over important things that we needed to know while, needed to know to make a committee function, such as how to conduct a meeting using Robert's Rules of Order, the importance of the Brown Act, as well as the form of local government we have, the council member form of government, and the role of each state department, the importance of civic engagement and service within our city. And the retreat helped us refocus on the purpose of WLC, and we came back from it with a renewed sense of commitment and determination for our committee moving forward.
On behalf of the Youth Leadership Committee, I would like to extend our sincerest appreciation to the City Council for allowing this retreat to take place and to provide the resources needed for it to make it happen. A huge thank you to Servwell Disposal for the gracious donation that helped us to make this retreat possible, and to the Department of Parks and Recreation for arranging and coordinating this event. Thank you. That includes our presentation.
We are very fortunate, Mr. Mayor, to have representatives from Servwell Disposal, John Perroff Jr. and Nico, I'm sorry, Schubin. Thank you. I knew that. I was just testing him. And so they actually have something to present, the WLC, and also I'd like to take a picture with them, as well as with you, to go ahead and thank them for their, again, the gracious donation and for the council's support of this.
Of course.
Thank you.
Of course. Of course. Let's get centered. Can some of you go over here to the left also? Perfect. Nico, John. Come back here. Yeah, there you go. Okay, now, girls come around, get closer. You can go. Guys move in more. Two rows. Yeah. There you go. Wayne, you want to be in this picture too, sir?
All right, three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
So my name is Lee Schubin. This is my cousin Johnny Schubin. We're a third generation for the city of Santa Fe Springs. My grandfather started this company in 1949. We've been serving the city of Santa Fe Springs for over 75 years. And one thing he told us and taught us over the years with me and him growing up in our Christian school, he always took on field trips to the whole school we took him over. And he always wanted to give back to the community and the businesses. And we just wanted to tell thank you for Mayor and City Council. And Wayne, here's a check for next year's donation for them to go on.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you, girls and Wayne, for being the leadership for them and going on the retreat with them. And once again, Servile Disposal, thank you for your generosity. Much, much appreciated. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could I say a few words? I just wanted to add in to thank you so much that it's so important to have these young people going out and going to these events and learning and becoming great leaders that they are. You're going to see when you grow up, these memories here, you're going to remember them. And you're going to be, just like them, giving back to the community. You're going to see it's very important what you are doing, volunteering, serving your community. And I thank all of you young ladies because you're doing a great thing for you, your family, and our community. So thank you.
Next, we have Black History Month. Stand in the schoolhouse door. I'd like to call upon Director of Park and Recreation, Gus Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight gives me great pleasure to have with us Lee Squire. Lee is an honorary member of our community. He is a Vietnam-era veteran from the U.S. Army. He's also a civil rights advocate. His presentation is in honor of the Alabama National Guard, who defended the freedoms of Vivian Malone and James Hood. With that, let's have a warm introduction from Mr. Lee Squire.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor and City Council, and Gus Hernandez. We serve to preserve the freedom of our current and future generations. My generation are the children of the Holocaust and World War II. We grew up during the Civil Rights Movement and the Vietnam War. We fought to defend the nation against the foreign enemy of communism and the domestic enemy of racism. In 1954, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled in Brown v. Board of Education that racial segregation in public schools was unconstitutional. However, many southern states, including Alabama, continued with segregation in all public schools. Proclamation 3542 by John F. Kennedy declaring unlawful obstruction of justice and what they call accommodations in the state of Alabama. Executive Order 11111 by John F. Kennedy federalized the Alabama National Guard, where President John F. Kennedy placed the Alabama National Guard under federal control to enforce the court order, as Governor Wallace refused to obey. General of the National Guard ordered the Alabama Governor George Wallace to remove himself from the doorway to allow Vivian Malone and James Hood to enroll in classes. That night, President Kennedy went on television, declared civil rights no longer a legal issue, but a moral issue, and appealed to the nation's sense of fairness. One week later, he submitted a comprehensive civil rights bill that became the foundation of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. There is no greater example of the U.S. military serving to preserve the freedoms of our current and future generations of children than this historic event. Thank you very much for allowing me to share with the City Council and we, the people of the city of Santa Fe Springs. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Lee, Lee, can I ask you to come up and take a picture with us? Normally, you're talking under oral communications, and we only give you three minutes. This time, you had whatever you needed, but we always want to take a picture of the speaker too. So come on up. Sure.
All right, three, two, one. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you again, Lee.
Of course.
Just to let you guys know, Lee's not a resident from the city of Santa Fe Springs. He actually is a resident from the city of Downey, right? Correct? And he started coming into our meetings and just showed a major interest in what was happening here. And the POW flag, I mean, it's the reason why it's there. So we've always talked about honoring our veterans, and he just put it into action for us. So, you know, Lee, I mean, we know that freedom is not free. I mean, it was paid with the ultimate price by your brothers and sisters, who were in the Vietnam wars and different wars that have come. So anytime we want, anytime here, what we're trying to do, and Renee has helped us out a lot. I think our Veterans Day, or, you know, things, when we honor our servicemen and women, I mean, it's just at a whole new level now. I think we can all say that. So, I mean, thank you, Lee, because without you and our city staff, and Renee, and the City Council, and the Mayor, I mean, we, you know, it's opened up our eyes and opened up our hearts to thanking, you know, God. And, you know, just thank you for all that you've done here and continue to be here. You are always welcome here because you're always a breath of fresh air. Thank you, Lee.
Next on the agenda, recognition of the Perez-Massia family 2024 Firefighters Toy Drive. I'd like to call upon Fire Chief Chad Bermidian. Close.
For this long overdue presentation, as you know, we were a tad bit busy last month, and I'm glad I'm getting around to doing this now. The firefighters this year were donated to the fire department, to the toy drive, roughly 1,200 gifts this year, plus gift cards. Those were donated over five different distribution points. We distributed at LA Cota, Department of Family Services, Little Lake School District Toy Distribution, Pacific Clinics, and the Salvation Army. We estimate to have served roughly 1,400 kids that live in this community this year. I'm very thankful for all the work that the firefighters did for that. None of this would be possible without toy donations. This year, we had a very sizable and very generous toy donation from the Perez and Massia families. So tonight, we're here to recognize them for their generous donation and everything that they gave back to the community. So if I could, I'd like to call up the Perez and Massia families. And I'd like to present you with this certificate from the city of Santa Fe Springs, the Santa Fe Springs Fire Department. The certificate is from the city of Santa Fe Springs, the Santa Fe Springs Fire Department, and the Santa Fe Springs firefighter. So we just wanted to thank you for your donation. You guys stay up there for just a minute, please. I have Natalie Tong here, Representative from Blanca Pacheco's office, who would also like to present you with the certificate.
Sorry, I'm short. On behalf of the California State Assembly and the Office of Assemblywoman Blanca Pacheco, we would like to join the city of Santa Fe Springs and recognize you for your generosity and dedication. Congratulations on this honor, and we really, really appreciate you guys.
Yes, of course. Of course. Thank you, everyone. We really appreciate it.
Abril, before you guys leave. Abril. It's great to see what you guys did. And this, if you guys don't know, if you guys didn't see, it was in honor of her mom, Cynthia, which a lot of people in the city knew. She opened up her heart to so many kids. She was like a grandma. She was a babysitter. She was a, it shows everything. I knew it was like the best cookies, too. If you ever want to go during the Christmas float stop, it was like the best night to go to the Perez's house. And what you guys did, I know it was really, really hard, losing someone, but bringing that memory alive and doing what you guys did says a lot of kind of how your mom raised you. And I appreciate that, that year. I mean, we all appreciate for what you guys did. I mean, look how many toys. I mean, just to see how many toys one family did is amazing. And just want to say thank you. And I just could see this growing and growing every year. And I know you're going to keep your mom's memory alive for as long as you want. And it, I mean, it's going to continue. So thank you so much on behalf of everyone here and all the kids that you guys did. It's your mom, your mom's going to be very happy. And thank you so much for everything you guys have done for the program. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Mr. Bobadilla, are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, we have no changes.
Thank you. Public comments are now open. The public may address the City Council on any non-public hearing item on the agenda or on any other matter within the City Council's jurisdiction. You will have an opportunity to speak for three minutes once the city clerk announces your name. City Clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak?
Yes, Mayor, we have one speaker, Lee Squire.
Lee Squire, Vietnamese veteran, U.S. Army, Mayor and City Council. You are sitting on some, two of the largest landmark anniversaries that this country probably has. First one is 2025 is the 250th anniversary of the Army, Navy, and Marine Corps. Who were created in 1775, these three branches defended the Declaration of Independence during the American Revolutionary War. Born out of the Revolutionary War was the Purple Heart Medal. Commander-in-Chief of the Continental Army, George Washington, is on that Purple Heart Medal. 2025 is also the 50th anniversary of the end of the Vietnam War. Veterans Day, March 29, 2025, is that day. Also born at the Vietnam War is our POW MIA flag. Also, finally, the roses to Council members Martin and Rodriguez is in honor of woman and mother. It is mothers who give birth to children, and children are birth to the freedoms of this nation. God bless America. God bless Israel. God bless my military, the veterans and their families, and God bless local policing and their families across America. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
City Clerk, is there anyone else wishing to speak?
No other speakers, Mayor.
I will now close public comments and move on to the next item. Mr. Bobadilla, do we have any staff communications?
We have none tonight, Mayor.
Okay, next is a public hearing, annual weed abatement program. The public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to be heard, please oppose the podium and state your name. City Clerk, do we have any speakers?
No speakers, Mayor.
We'll now close the public hearing. Is there a discussion or a motion for the approval? We have a motion. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. New business fiscal year 2024-2025, second quarter budget review and modifications. I'd like to call upon Mr. Bobadilla.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, as you know, we incorporated a quarterly review of our budget to give the council and the public an idea of how we're doing with our budget. And any course corrections we may need, we can do them at a quarterly basis. So before you is a 2024-2025 second quarter budget review and some modifications we were going to be asking the council to consider. I'd like to call on Adita, Finance Director, to present on the item.
Good evenings, mayors, mayor pretends, and council members. I'm happy to bring back the second quarters for your updates. There's a couple of reasons for the quarterly updates. That is to provide early interventions and help to improve communications. As we discussed last quarter, the first quarter provides stabilized inflation rate. And second quarter, we see a moderate increase that drive by the energy's price trend. Now, does anyone understand how inflation does to our purchasing power? What you remember last year, when you come home from the market with a packet of toilet paper, and you were so happy that they didn't increase the price. And it's like, happy, there's no price increasing. I get the same toilet paper, same price. But then later on, realize that instead of 400 sheets, it was only 300. So the price didn't change, the quantity changes. Just as a content, last first quarters, first quarter, between first quarter and second quarter, there's 100% basis change. So the Federal Reserve rate changed by 1%. Unemployment's rates moving toward 4% are we seeing. There's a couple of outside forces that will continue to create uncertainties in the economies. And we talk about sales tax, how it impacts our revenues as a whole. But just want to point out that consumer behavior shifts, and it creates negative impacts on the sale tax revenues. I'm happy to report that for the fiscal year 24-25, we're reporting $2.1 million of surplus. That is based on the vacancy saving for the first and the second quarters.
Melana, if I may add, we projected our budget, we budgeted about a $600,000 surplus when we adopted the budget. What was that number?
That was $2.1 million surplus.
Okay, that's what we projected when we adopted.
Initial adopted the budget.
So we're tracking pretty much close to what we're projecting.
Yes, with the first quarters and second quarter requests, additional expenditure will continue to track 2.1 due to vacancy savings. We didn't do any additional analysis for '23-24. We're looking to bring back the audit result next month at this point.
What's the sneak peek? What are you projecting for the close of '23-24?
I want to say 43 million, 43 millions for our reserve.
So we are looking to track to increase that to 43 million.
Yeah, from 40 million to 43 millions. Yeah, from 40 million to 43 millions. Our reserves are very healthy at this point, so nothing have changed in the first quarters. That is the sneak peek right there. Under-sized fund balance reserve are closer to 43% for the fiscal year end. And we are going to recommend and to allocate 1 million from an economic contingency to unexpected events. We'll bring back the results and provide recommendations for your considerations. This is my favorite slide. The green bar up there, that is revenues. The blue bars, that is the expenditures. Similar to your day-to-day personal financials, we have revenue that come in from sale tax, utility user tax, poverty tax. The one in August, November, February, and May, we received sale tax, poverty tax, utilities tax adjustment. Sale tax come in a monthly basis, but we receive a quarterly adjustment. July is our Christmas, so we get to spend majority of our one-time payment of fund, one of which the largest is the unfund liabilities, worker compensations, poverty liability, et cetera. Those are one-time payment that require at the beginning of the years.
So, this slide is very important for the council and the community to see. So, you know, for those of you who think that we get equal amount of money every month like we do on a paycheck, we don't. We get our revenue in different times of the month. And if you look at that graph, August, November, February, and May are the months we get the most amount of revenue. And the blue line is what we spend. And obviously, we, we spend high in July, and then we kind of track pretty steady, and then we start to ramp up in June. But it kind of gives you an idea of what our cash flow looks like. You can see in September, July, and in June, our cash flow is very low, and we have to ensure that we balance that as, as we do our budget. So, this gives you a good snapshot of how we, how and when we get our funds.
On a monthly basis, we spend between 5 to 9 million dollar per month.
So, it just shows where we're at, like, as, because I know we see these quarterly, but it just shows the median form that, you know, where we're at if we're on an average, you know? Just to give us an average, so if we do a scale that we show this to the public, that we also show like, hey, this is what we kind of bring in monthly, this is what it would look like on the average scale.
Yeah, we could do that. And quite frankly, the way we, we manage our budgets for any particular department, Alana will show this slide, we, we kind of look at percent spent. That's a, that's a very important factor. So, Gus is a good example of that. Gus will spend a lot of his money upfront. So, on his budget, he'll look like he's 60 or 70% spent, and he's still got, you know, four or five months left in the budget. But because the way his programs run, he has to spend money early in the budget season. It doesn't mean he's going to run out of money, but it just shows percentage. But it gives the department has an idea to see how they're, how they're spending their money and where they need to look if they're overspending. Or they're getting close to, you know, the budget amount that we can do a course correction if we need to.
For the first six months of cash receipts, it's pretty steady and is in line with our projections, with a couple of exception. Poverty tax up there, you see, there is one component that including the poverty tax, which is our PPTFs, that is redevelopment's passing through from county to local government agency. We normally don't receive it until February. Utilities use attack, we are behind by one quarter. Vehicle in Leo, which are triple flip, triple flips, we normally don't receive that until February. So, that's why those category normally is, are behind on budgets until next quarter.
And we need that money because eggs are very expensive.
Sale tax by the month. This is a good graphic for sale tax, which is our major revenue source. We receive on a monthly basis, and there's a quarterly adjustment. That's why you see a little spike right there. 83.2% of our sale tax revenue are coming from the business located in City of Santa Fe Springs. There's little components that in the county pool, which is 17%, that's nearly nothing. And there's state pool, which is $20,000 for the years. Those are the business coming from other area that paying in the pool and City of Santa Fe Springs get a share of it.
So, we're getting $7 million out of the county pool. Where before, if you looked at this about maybe 10 years ago, if we got a couple hundred thousand dollars, that was a lot. Because of the growth of online sales, what the county did and the state did is they divided the amount of online sales by 88 cities. So, we get an 88th of every dollar, no matter where the sale happens in the county. If the sale happens in Santa Fe Springs, or if it happens anywhere within the county, we get an 88th. So, that shows you how much money people are spending online, and it's become almost 20% of our budget. So, we're very excited about that. I know there are cities that aren't, that have the facilities in their city and are complaining that, hey, we have this, you know, 300,000 square foot warehouse and, and jobs and road and public safety, but yet we're sharing the 88th with 88 cities. So, I know there's been discussions about changing that, but for now, it is definitely a big win for us and continues to, to get better every year.
Bingo cross. This is quarter-to-quarter comparisons. Look at the data comparing to prior year, the same quarter, auto and transportation drops significantly. So, it's for service station, general consumer good. Aside from that, our win-win categories are business and construction, business industry, and food and drugs, restaurant and hotel. Those offset provide, still providing negative 1% decline in our sale tax in comparing to the same quarters of last year. However, if you look at our counties, they dropped by 2.7%. Certain California dropped by 2.3%. Overall, City of Santa Fe Springs still doing better.
And I do want to make a mention. I know there's a lot of discussions about what's hap, what's happened at the federal level, and is that going to affect the City of Santa Fe Springs? And with grants and programs being terminated, thankfully, at this point, we don't receive a whole lot of federal funding. We're not an entitled city, so we don't get HUD dollars as much as other cities do, which are tied to programs like for seniors. Most of our funds come from our general fund, so we don't have that fear of having to close programs or having to shut services down if the federal government decides to take a lot of those back. There are some projects that are funded with federal dollars, like some of our road projects or some of our potential bridge projects. Those were crossing our fingers, and we did receive a letter from one of the projects telling us to stand by, to see what happens after the dust settles. So, if that happens, then we'll have to kind of regroup and figure out how to, how to fund those. But thankfully for now, it's not really going to affect much for us.
But just to add to that, I mean, the, the staff have, have been on point actually ahead of the game, so they've actually, any type of grants or anything that they've had to do, they've actually done their part early enough. So, some of the things, we've already been halfway granted, and when you're halfway granted, I believe, it pretty much means that the money is already here in the state. So, from the federal, it's already arrived. We just haven't seen it yet, but that means we're going to see it.
Specifically for the fire department, even though it's federally funded, it's administered by the state of California is a good example, and the funds are already at the state, so we can draw it down from the state.
The first six months of payroll data showing that we are in line with our projections. Fires, as mentioned earlier, is a little bit over the budget, so it's part in recreation services. Fires departments have been assisting with the various fire out there, so we get reimbursement from this day.
That, that does look like they're over, but since they did work at the Eaton Fire, and the Palisades Fire, and some of the other fires, a lot of those overtime funds get reimbursed by the state. So, once we get reimbursed, they'll, they'll show, they'll be backtracking as budgeted. Actually, we'll probably be better off than what we budgeted.
Yeah. And so, as the CD managers mentioned earlier, as part in recreations, most of the events incurred during the second quarter, so shipment of the payroll to the second quarter for utilizations. For maintenance and operations, we still a little bit behind on budgets where we anticipate to utilize most of the expenditures this third quarter. There's a couple of projects behind. I also want to bring to your attention that we funded 230 full-time position. Currently, we fill 199 position. We have a vacancies rate of 13%. Along with that, offset is the over-utilize of overtime. We're looking at about 1.8 million dollar of vacancy savings. For the first six months, maintenance and operations by large categories, it sees pretty much everyone, everything is still in line with the budget. Vehicles and equipment we purchase as needed base, so we utilize majority of the budgets of funds.
And if I may add, going forward, we're working with Whittier for hopefully July 1 to transfer over our police vehicle maintenance and police vehicle purchasing back to Whittier. So, we're working that out as we speak. Hopefully, before Brian officially leaves, we'll have that done. We'll track them down in Vernon, yeah.
Our spending allocation is very consistent with what we budget in term of payroll allocation and maintenance operations or one-time costs, with the exception that CIP, which is project, we normally don't budget with operational, annual operational budgets. We utilize 6 million so far, and we anticipate to utilize another 6 million for the next six months. This is the items that have been approved by the councils between October and December. The only item that impacting our general funds is the CD-wide scanning projects. During the second quarter, we are, we also received by position adjustment from various department. This is to help increase operational efficiencies to T-Street's plannings and overall organizational During the second, second quarter, we also received maintenance operations-related adjustments of 1 million 95,000. Of that, we also received grant in 585,000 to offset those expenditures. So, that is the general funds second quarters update. Coming to a water funds, water funds not requesting any adjustment.
Here comes the bad news.
At this point. However, I want to bring your attention to the revenues number. Those are estimates, revenues amount. We have not received, a lot of cash received. If you remember, so at the beginning of the fiscal year, our system broke. It wasn't able to generate billing for a couple months. When we, then at the end of December, we was able to send out average billings, billings based on average consumptions. So, we, the 7.7 million is mainly a estimate placeholder, but we take out the estimates revenues amount for the second quarter, you're looking at four, at least $4 million of deficits. So, this is one to be aware of that.
Alana, if I can just elaborate on our system. So, our system is a DOS-based system. It was, it was programmed back in the 80s. There's hardly anybody left anywhere around us that knows how to read it or understand it. It broke. It, it would not work. We tried everything we could to at least get it to run a bill, and we couldn't do it. So, in essence, meters were being read, and we couldn't use the data to put into the software because the software was broken. There wasn't any other way or plan B to do it. So, we, in essence, had to create a spreadsheet within about a week or two, and the spreadsheet was just made to be able to read potentially a meter and then put it into the system. We decided at some point just to do an average billing because it would be faster. And I know a lot of our residents have, have had questions about our billing and, and what the bill means. And the only way to, to collect the bill right now has been just to look at an average bill of what maybe water use was in the past and bill that average out until we eventually can fix it. I'm happy to report that I think next week, you're going to start running the new software. So, we purchased, while we built and purchased the new software tailored to our needs, it's completed. We're going to start running it. We just can't activate it yet because we have to run a couple cycles just to get any bugs out that we might see. And then hopefully, maybe after two runs, we'll, we'll actually be able to put it out. The bills actually are going to look nicer. They, they'll have a little bit more information on them. We are one of the few cities that still has, I would call them analog readers. The, the meters that they read are old meters. I don't think they're roughly over 20 years old. We don't have digital meters. That's something that the water department desperately needs to look for funding to figure out how to put those in. We physically have to read them by hand. It takes about two months, two and a half months to do a complete read cycle in the entire city. So, we're in the process right now of updating our meter reads. And not only do we have to meet readers, but, read meters, but we have to verify that the meter that's on a property has an actual account and that is actually active and, and in our system. And we found that sometimes that's not the case. There could be a meter that's shows reading but doesn't show an account, doesn't get a bill. So, we're in essence auditing ourselves and trying to figure out as we go forward, getting the new bill out and getting the proper meter reads and the right bill to the, to the residents. So, bear with us, we're almost there. I think in the next month or so, we should be back online. And then we'll have a conversation with the council down the road as to, during the budget study session, and how to address this deficit.
Balance. If, if anyone here received two bills that look identicals, they are different cycles. They're not duplicate.
The same average, but different cycles. We're just behind.
Along with second quarters update, we also kick-started the fiscal year '25, '26 budgets. Right now, the team is rolling out the budget software, which is in February for department to use. So, that will be a, the first time that City of Santa Fe has a budget software that we can utilize to do a budget.
So, in the past, budget was done by hand? So, they would send an email with maybe a spreadsheet?
An Excel spreadsheet.
That was internally created, and we built our budget off a spreadsheet. So, now we have a budget software that not just gives us the tools to create a software, but it's given us all kinds of tools and analytics, as council members tomorrow asked. Can we provide this information? Can we provide that information? The software will pick all that apart, where before, we, we didn't have that capability.
And also, Lana, if you can, I mean, as a rough number, even Renee or, or Nick, can you give like the feedback on what we were spending before to now that we have this budget process, you know, with the, the software?
So, in the, in the past, this is how the budgets process go. We send a spreadsheet to the department and give them two weeks. They enter all the data and send it back to finance. Finance take the data and then enter into a master worksheet so that we don't have misinformation. And then, and then in between, we utilize that to discuss the information with CD managers, CD councils. If there's any adjustment, we come back to the master worksheet and update them. And once updated, then we bring to council for reviews and adoption. If anything changed throughout the process, we come back and update those number again. And then, we consolidate each worksheet into a budget document. So, it take about for one, between one and two steps, it probably take about a good month to translate all those data from department to the budget document to a document that city councils can approve. And that is not the end of it. That, that's the middle of it. So, we use all those worksheet. We need to consolidate all the 300 worksheet into one Excel worksheet that we can import it into Munis. Then, we have, we can do a budget and actual comparisons.
What cost, what do you think it would cost us like before to now? What costs, what do you think it would cost us like before to now? I mean, because.
Gosh, there's going to be a huge savings and staff time.
Because I think it's important for, for, for the residents to know because when we make this change and you do these type of things, I mean, even staff, you know, they need to realize that because all of a sudden they think, hey, some of my duties were taken away. Did I do something wrong? No, we just became more efficient. We became more efficient, I think. And that's the, that's the hard part because I know that certain employees, you know, just, you know, they, they don't realize that efficiency sometimes, I mean, I'm not saying all, but sometimes the people don't realize that efficiency is, is always better, you know, and it's just safer and it.
Council member, I'll give you an example. When did you start working on this presentation? How long ago?
For real? I would say last month. I started getting data.
So last month, she started putting together the graphs, the pie charts she saw, the, the, the information. She physically has to go into her spreadsheets and extract information and just to, just to get the data, let alone put the presentation together, right? Of how it's going to flow. With ClearGov, it'll instantly create graphs and analysis.
Has a capability, yes.
On the click of a button.
And that's while having.
So Lana can do a hundred other things.
I can do all the thing.
How old is your, your kid now, a year and a half?
My, I have a two years and a six year, a six year and two years.
Yeah, so she's still juggling the two.
Which is fun. So that is part of my, my day job and my, my night job, which is telling them how to enter spreadsheets.
You hit it on the button. Our, our goal is to become more efficient, to be able to do more than, than what we've done in the past. Payroll's a good example, right? Is we do a lot by hand and there's a lot of checks and balances we have to do by hand. Where with our new software, it becomes seamless and we can do other things that we weren't able to do before. So we're really excited about the opportunities and as you know, we're creating a lot more efficiencies with new software, some of these positions that you, that hopefully you approve tonight. We'll create some more efficiency specifically in Gus's realm and, and police services as well. So as, as, as we present the budget updates, we're, we're kind of giving you a, I would say a snapshot of, of how we're doing, but also a prediction of what we're, what we're looking at at year end. So as, as we go through the budget, you'll start to, to make sense of, you know, where we're ending and where we're trying to go the next fiscal year.
So we are looking to bring the preliminary information to the CD manager for review with the department. And in April and May, we'll kickstart the three budget workshops. Once that's done, we can bring the budgets back for adoption in June. So that add my presentation if there's any questions.
Thank you, Lana.
Thank you, Lana.
Thank you, Lana. I would just ask, I know our calendars are starting to fill up quick, so for May and June, you might want to start looking at the dates so we can, we don't schedule something else. Is there any more discussion or do I have a motion for approval of item number seven? It's moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Next, Public Financing Authority, Water Utility Authority, Housing Successor, Successor Agency and City Council Consent Calendar. Public Financing Authority, Water Utility. We have sixteen consent items, numbers eight through twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
I move.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, we have appointments to boards, committees and commissions. Council member Mora.
None tonight, mayor.
Council member Martin.
None tonight, thank you.
Council member Rodriguez.
None tonight, thank you.
Mayor Protem Zamora.
None tonight, sir.
And I have one to the hack committee. I'd like to appoint Lisa Chavaria. Council comments, AB twelve thirty-four, council conference reporting, council member Mora.
No conferences this period, but I just want to again thank Nico, Servwell, your company for your generosity and always being there for our community, always giving back. We really appreciate that. The Macias Perez family, they're already gone, but you know, what an incredible act that they did and just contributing back to our community. Last two events that we had, Coffee with a Cop and our Penny Carnival, you know, really well attended. It's a great event for, for the community. And Mr. Lee Squire, thank you for those words, both for, you know, recognizing this month and also for bringing that up with, with the military. So we really appreciate you. And with that said, we'll see everybody in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Martin.
Actually, not, not much. It's at the tax program. It's been real, I mean, I don't see anybody, but that, that VITA program is awesome, awesome, awesome. My daughter did her taxes and she loves it. So it's simple, easy, friendly, it's great. I had brought up, huh? Who knows?
It is, actually.
It's great. Also regarding, I know Cindy's not here tonight, and when we got the hope with the, with the fires and stuff, between Cindy and Wendy Meter from Tangram, we found out that Tangram donated close to half a million dollars worth of furniture for the schools to start up. And that's just great. That just says a lot about our small city, what we do. And that goes just, you know, just with Servwell too. I mean, we're small, but we're so mighty of what we do. So thank you so much for continuing to pick this as your, as your business home. So thank you. Lee, and we're waiting for you to buy a house here pretty soon. You know, we're waiting. And Aviva's, it's great seeing you. We love seeing Aaron here, but it's really nice seeing you and it's going to be great seeing you guys and honoring you guys on Friday for what you guys do on a day in and day out in our, in, in our city. And that's it. Thank you so much.
And just when council member Martin is very humble, she was also part of that group that helped out with the, the schools up there. So she did her part for that. Council member Rodriguez.
Also, yes, Lee, thank you so much for our rose. You're so thoughtful always and such a gentleman. I just want to thank you so much. It's so, smells pretty too. Yes, thank you. I wanted to also thank Gus and our entire Parks and Rec staff for the Penny Carnival yesterday. It was just a huge success. We had so much fun. Hot dogs, the jumpers, the refreshments, everything was, was great. And thank you to all our staff. I would like to thank our Whittier police and our firefighters. They protect us, they keep us safe, they fundraise, they just do pretty much everything. And we want to thank you for everything that you do. And we just hope that we can continue to have these great events in our city and just thank our police and our firefighters, our first responders. Thank you for all you do. And God bless you all and have a nice evening.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Zamora.
Also, the Penny Carnival, I mean, if anybody showed up, man, the lines were, you know, going from one end of the, of the brick wall to the, to the bleachers almost. And I mean, when you got in there, I mean, it, it went from being nice and chilly in there to nice and hot, you know? So that's how many people showed up and that was just inside of the gymnasium. Imagine outside also, so it was well attended. So it was great to see so many people there and just the amazing job that, that the city, the city has done. I think a, a major tribute to that and you know, just hopefully we, we still continue to piggyback. I know a lot of the rec staff, you know, that when they're homegrown, a lot of their family and friends go. So if we can continue to make sure that, I know February is the month that we hire a lot of our young kids. So make sure that a lot of our young kids are from our community, are from the City of Santa Fe Springs, just so they have that, they have that background, they could also put it in their future resume. So anytime that we can give back to our kids first and, and empower them, it's always a, a major bonus. So also, when it comes to our quarter mania, we have a quarter mania coming up this Friday, February twenty-first. Sorry, chief and captain, I won't be able to attend the Silver Shields, raising money for kids. So it's for Little Lake City School District, and I believe Little Lake has more than, what, forty-five hundred kids or something like that? And so it just a means of us raising money as a foundation to give back to our classrooms. Teachers will, will petition for grants and up to a thousand dollars. And we, you know, last year or this past school year, we were able to give out fifty-three thousand and, and over fifty-three thousand in grants. So you know, it, it does help out the classroom, especially because, you know, it's difficult for teachers to fork up that money or, and you know, so when we get assists, and I know the City of Santa Fe Springs always does an amazing job in helping out. Servwell disposal, thank you for your, your continued contributions and, and anybody else who, you know, Malia Holmes, I know, we've had different donations. So I know I hit up the Whittier PD, Angie, so she told me to hit her up. But other than that, when it comes to Coffee with the Cops, I'm asking to see if we can move it to the NPR rooms of the, of our schools. I know we did that in the past and I know I've talked to you guys, just to let you know, like, you know, when we do it like at eight-thirty, once the kids go in, you know, you probably average like what, fifty, sixty, you know, seventy parents? So it, it just makes it easier because then we bring it to them and we could utilize each school and you know, that we have here, just so people can, can easily attend it.
We could probably dub it something different than a Coffee with a Cop. We could like do, do a different program for that. Definitely do that.
Yeah. And I know that, like I said in the past, it was just really well attended, so just in case.
Sure they want to see the chief there.
They actually did because they have a lot of questions right now. I think with the, you know, the big scare that people are getting misinformation, I think it would just help if, if you know, we did have our officers and individuals who can speak, you know, bilingual and, and you know, that can translate and just give proper information of what's going on in our.
As long as he wears his chief hat.
No, the helmet, the chief helmet. The chief, I'm sorry, that's an inside joke for the, but other than that, I mean, I just want to thank you all for coming out tonight and, and you know, once again, Mr. Lee, thank you, you know, thank you, sir. I mean, you know, it means a lot, you know, having family members that, you know, went to Vietnam and didn't come back the same. And, and, and you know, I just having you here, it's just always a reminder. And I know that every time I tell my mom about you and you know, what you do for the Vietnam vets and, and how you speak for them, she's always remembering her brother. So I know this is for her and thank you, sir, that I may give this to her. And you know, may God always bless you, sir. You're always welcome in our city. So other than that, you guys have a good night. Thank you for the continued birthday wishes. I, I've been celebrating my birthday for, yeah.
Two weeks.
Yeah, almost, yeah, two weeks. I had a party yesterday too, so thank you, everybody. And so I appreciate it. God bless you all.
Well, I concur with everybody, all the statements that were said tonight, but I do want to thank the residents, our honorary resident of Santa Fe Springs, our police department, our vendors, our, our, our business people, our staff. All of this together makes Santa Fe Springs the city it is. You see and hear about other cities and we are one of a kind. We've always said that. We're a small but mighty. In fact, a couple of days ago, I had a, it was a program with twenty other mayors from cities. And I mentioned our small but mighty city and everybody applauded for that. So they, they know Santa Fe Springs. So thank you again for being here tonight. We appreciate each and every one of you for, for being here. And I would like to close tonight's meeting in memory of longtime resident Fred Corona. Thank you.